Call to order the January 25th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember France for our ceremonial opening.
Thank you, Mayor. This past Friday Cary lost one of its greatest citizens in Daphne Ashworth. Daphne was a vibrant soul who literally lit up the room every time she entered. Always full of joy, always with a smile on her face, and always eager to help others in need. She was a proud and dignified woman who had a passion for life. Daphne leaves behind a legacy that helped shape our community. Her fingerprints are literally all over Cary and especially in our downtown. Along with her husband Ralph, in 1957, they opened Ashworth Drugs in downtown and later Ashworth Village. And in 1969, she opened Lynn's Hallmark Shops. She was an incredibly smart businesswoman. Daphne was instrumental in helping to bring our first library to town in 1960 and co-chaired the fundraising committee which helped raise the funds necessary to restore our beautiful Page Walker Arts and History Center. Daphne was also a founding member of the Heart of Cary Association, the Cary Women's Club, Cary Visual Arts, the Cary Chamber of Commerce, and the Wake Med Foundation. She was a docent at the North Carolina Museum of Art and served on the Hallmark Cards National Advisory Board as well as the North Carolina Pharmacy Ladies Auxiliary Board where, to nobody's surprise, she served as president. She was a founding patron of the Cary Debutante Ball and was always an active supporter of Dorcas Ministries and the YMCA of the Triangle. And somehow and in the midst of all that, she found time to be an amazing wife, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother for her lovely family and a great friend to everyone who knew her. Cary is a better place because of Daphne Ashworth and her family. We owe her a debt of gratitude that can truly never be repaid. We can however honor her legacy by doing what Daphne spent her entire life doing: being kind and compassionate to one another, helping those in need, and giving back to the wonderful community that has given so much to us. Please keep Ralph and all the Ashworth family in your thoughts and prayers if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Don. We now move to our first order of business, which is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous and we have an agenda that's adopted. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. Before we move to our first item, we have special guests in the audience. Two scouts in our audience Cormick and Brendan Lynch. If you would please stand. They're from Troop 213 and are working on their merit badges. Our only report tonight is an update from our town attorney, Ms. Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, I'm happy to announce that the challenge that Apex brought to Cary and Apex's interbase and transfer certificate has been amicably resolved by the entry of a consent judgment that upholds the certificate. A copy of that consent judgment is available through the town if anyone's interested. Thank you.
Thank you. That's good news. Okay, we now move to Public Speaks Out. The next agenda item, Public Speaks Out, has included instructions for speaking on the printed agenda. And if you would like to speak, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments. And a speaker may speak on any topic unless it's a public hearing. And that's to their advantage because they'll get more time in a public hearing. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, not to be rude but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium. When that green light turns yellow, it means you have 30 seconds remaining. When the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, that's when I'm going to interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. To have an efficient Public Speaks Out item, we ask that groups have a spokesperson on behalf of all the group to reduce repetitive comments. Also, I would ask if you're next in line to speak with behind the person at the podium that you would stand right next to the stairway so that we can be more efficient in getting our speakers to the podium. Also, it signals to me that there are other speakers ready to speak. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding and respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from the meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out. And I would invite anyone who would like to speak on any topic unless it's a public hearing to approach the podium, one at a time. First speaker, please. Anyone for Public Speaks Out. Going once, going twice. Seeing no one will close Public Speaks Out. That's rare. I can't remember the last time that's happened.
I can't.
Don't knock it.
We must be doing something right.
Better knock away there.
We now move to the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting, which is item four on your agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. Following adoption of resolution to schedule public hearings for 17A10 Life International, Life Community Church of Research, Triangle Park, North Carolina Incorporated annexation; 17A12 JMRS One LLC annexation; 17A13 Campbell Investment of North Carolina LLC annexation; 17A11 Macedonia United Methods Church of Cary, North Carolina INC. annexation. Then we move to condemnation resolutions to secure necessary easements for the Green Level West Road Waterline Project and Wimberly Road Waterline Project. Following the following traffic schedule amendments: speed limit and school speed limits on McCrimmon Parkway, that's State Road 3127; speed limit zones, State Road 1789, that's at Pleasant Grove Church Road, Diamond Valley Drive, and Glen Tahoe Place. We have condemnation resolutions to secure necessary easements for the Paramount Pump Station Elimination Project. And we have NC DOT's I-40 at Aviation Parkway Interchange Improvement. We have the renaming of private access easement portion of Winding Pine Trail. Councilmembers, would you like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve in its entirety?
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out except for one thing. You now have five minutes to speak instead of three. Our first public hearing is item 5.1, which is 17RAZ23 Village at the Park Senior Planner Katie Dry will introduce this item. Council will not take action on this item tonight, but it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and their recommendation before it returns to council at a future meeting. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, Council. This is a request to rezone 15.94 acres at 7655 Kit Creek Road and 5329 NC 55 Highway. The property is undeveloped. It's at the corner of Kit Creek and Green Level Church Road. It touches NC 55 Highway on the east. The current zoning for the property is PDD Major, which is Planned Development District, is part of the Village at the Park PDD, and the site is identified as Phase 4B. Phase 4B is shown here in purple on the phasing map for Village at the Park. And allowed uses for Phase 4B include 78,000 square feet of retail, 88,000 square feet of office, 150-room hotel, and 45 multifamily units. Village at the Park PDD, when it was originally improved, was intended to be a mixed-use community which incorporated retail, office, and residential uses in a walkable environment. The limits of the PDD are shown here in yellow. Due to market forces including nearby retail and office development, the Village at the Park PDD has been amended several times over the past 15 years. Current land uses within the PDD consist of two multifamily developments: a gas station with a convenience store and an elementary school. This rezoning seeks to amend Phase 4B of Village at the Park PDD to allow for a maximum of 300 multifamily units and 19,000 square feet of office and retail. With this revision and the proposed uses, the applicant's proposed additional conditions associated with this PDD amendment to restrict the building height to a maximum of 35 feet for non-residential uses, 60 feet for residential uses, and add the following transportation improvements: side access improvements at Green Level Church Road and Highway 55, as well as off-site improvements at Green Level Church Road and Wake Road, and Green Level Church Road and Stone Water Glen Lane. Staff has evaluated the site using the Imagine Cary Community Plan. First, we look at the plan's Future Growth Framework map. This site's located in what's called the Mixed Neighborhood Development Category, which is described as including neighborhoods in the northwestern part of Cary located within two miles of the Research Triangle Park. Mixed neighborhoods are intended to have a substantial variety of housing types and densities. The predominant land use types typically will be a mix of residential detached, townhomes, and multifamily homes. When looking at the chapters for Imagine Cary, the following chapters were found to be applicable. And these include the Live Chapter, the Work Chapter, and the Shape Chapter. In the Live Chapter, the plan speaks to expanding housing choices townwide to meet the needs of a wide range of household sizes and market preferences. This rezoning seeks to add multifamily housing and therefore may help to offer additional choices to singles, couples without children, smaller households, young households, and seniors. However, overall in Cary, residential detached and multifamily housing tend to be the dominant housing options, while products such as townhomes, patio homes, and smaller residential detached are the most lacking. And when looking at housing options within a half mile of the site, the housing supply Cary's town limits consists so far of 710 multifamily units, 108 townhomes, and 82 residential detached units. However, as you can see from this map, there's also land that is yet to be developed in this area. When evaluated under the Work Chapter, staff notes that future residents and workers at this location might enjoy the quality-of-life benefit of being able to live close to the Research Triangle Park. Looking at Policy 8, which speaks to ensuring adequate land is available to develop employment uses, it is noted that the current uses allow Phase 4B to have 88,000 square feet of office, 78,000 square feet of retail, as well as hotel and multifamily uses. And the proposed rezoning reduces the combined office and retail space to a maximum of 19,000 square feet with no minimum required and without specifying the nature of the split between the retail and office uses. When looking at the Town of Cary GIS maps, the site is impacted by stream buffers. The site is also impacted by a natural gas line easement that traverses the site. The easement can present some development challenges, although there are development activities which can occur along gas pipeline easements if approved by the pipeline company, which is the easement holder. These types of improvements can include parking lots and driveways within the easement, but not buildings. In fact, in the original 2002 master plan for Village at the Park, the easement was acknowledged and taken into account for the original proposed mix of uses. Here you can see the easement across the property. The original plan was designed so that all buildings were located outside of the easement. According to the Park's Recreation and Goldshore Facilities Master Plan, street-side trails are proposed along NC 55 Highway, Kit Creek Road, and Green Level Church Road. These trails have been constructed on Highway 55 and Kit Creek Road, and any remaining gaps will be constructed with the corresponding road frontage for the site. The plan has also identified a future community park for the Town of Cary property located 0.4 miles to the south of the property. According to the transportation plan, Green Level Church Road, Kit Creek Road, and Highway 55 are thoroughfares. And there is a go-trangle transit route along NC 55. A traffic study was completed for this rezoning case, which evaluated 10 intersections within one mile of the project boundary. The applicant has offered to complete transportation improvements at four of the five intersections. The right-turn lanes offered to be constructed at the two entrances on NC 55 and Green Level Church Road would primarily serve the subject development. None of the improvements at the intersection of 55 and Kit Creek Road have been offered as zoning conditions, and the intersection of NC 55 Highway and Kit Creek Road is currently failing at the PM peak hour. Staff has not received any information on the challenges the applicant would encounter that would make the intersection improvements infeasible. There was a neighborhood meeting held for this rezoning on September 6th, and there were no attendees at this meeting. Since that time, staff has received some questions from nearby residents, including questions about the proposal and the use proposed, the town regulations. We've also heard support expressed from some nearby residents for this project. Properties within 800 feet of the subject site were notified. The site was also posted and legal ads were placed on the town's website in accordance with the town's land development ordinance. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share comments, and following that, staff will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. I'm going to invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Bear with me for one second, Mr. Mayor. Trying to find a slide. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant in this case. As is usually the case, yes, thank you, staff's done a wonderful job of presenting the background associated with this project. As was noted, the site was originally zoned in 2002 at a time when it, a lot of projects were approved kind of in that mid-'90s, mid-'2000 ballpark and planned to have many mixed-use campuses almost everywhere. And I think that the future land use map that used to exist in the town was a recognition of what was the trend at that time, and that was planning many mixed-use activity centers at a variety of different places along the way. The reality that has transpired since that time is, I think it's the adage, "If you plan a whole bunch of mixed-use centers, you get no mixed-use centers," is that rather than centralizing into destination centers like the town has done with the Cary Community Plan, the challenge that you face when you try to have many towns in each individual place is that you don't, you're not able to centralize where the focus of development should be. And so I think that this project, in this particular site, which was zoned, as noted in the staff report, for 80,000 square feet of retail, 88,000 square feet of office, a hotel, and 45 multifamily units. I mean, if you look at that proposal today, you'd wonder exactly what that was going to be. It seems, it's an odd request, or it would be an odd request today, given what we know about market trends associated with how office is developing and how retail is developing. So the proposal that's before you tonight, we believe, is a proposal for a better use of the land. One of the challenges that this site has, and it had at the time, and it's even more of a challenge now, is the site constraints associated with it. First, the site enjoys limited site frontage. As you can see, there's only a little bit of access onto Highway 55, which would never be a signalized intersection given its proximity to Kit Creek Road, which ultimately, that's where the signal is. It's got limited frontage on Kit Creek Road, and then it's got most of its frontage on Green Level Church, which is not where you would want the front door of a mixed-use campus to be. The front door to any meaningful office or meaningful retail wouldn't want to be served with an access off of Green Level Church Road. And so the site constraints, first related to the frontage, present challenges to delivering what was envisioned back in 2002. Second, as was noted by the staff, there's a significant gas line easement that traverses the site diagonally here. There are buffered streams in the northeast corner of the site as well as the southeast corner of the site. And there's also a Duke power line that runs north and south in this area. So it's a, it's a site, and you all are familiar with challenged sites. All of the sites that are remaining to be developed in the Town of Cary, they're tough sites. And so in 2002, it may have seemed like a good idea. I think the reality is, what we have learned, is that having some combination of retail and office-centric mixed use with a smattering of multifamily units probably isn't a feasible use for the site, nor is it its highest and best use. I brought up this slide because multifamily continues to be very attractive in the Town of Cary and other places in the Triangle. The Triangle is continuing to grow, and Cary is no stranger to that. And multifamily opportunities continue to be in high demand to support major employment. And this site does, this slide does a great job of showing just how close this area of Cary is, and you all know it, you're familiar with it, but it is, it is on top of RTP. I mean, there's some transportation barriers to getting there currently, but generally speaking, this section of Cary is very close to RTP and makes sites like this tremendously attractive for multifamily development to serve the employers that are looking to locate and continue to operate in the RTP. And so we believe that a multifamily development with complementary and modest amounts of neighborhood-related retail and office is a better use for the site. And so what is before you tonight is 300 multifamily units with up to 19,000 square feet of office and/or retail. And again, that would, we would envision be neighborhood-oriented. I would note that the lots that you have seen allotted here for townhomes and single-family detached, the staff, Katie did a good job of covering the mixture of uses in this area and noted that there's a lack of those uses in this area. Those lots were actually developed by the same applicant, and so they're aware of the housing needs in this area and have been delivering housing opportunities for a multitude of different type of uses. So with that, we are, we are early in the process. We look forward to working with the town and with the Planning and Zoning Board, and hopefully we'll come back to you with a favorable recommendation and you all support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Now it's time for a public hearing for 17RAZ23 Village at the Park. You know, I'd invite our speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and this will be sent to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. We now move to our next and last public hearing, 5.2. Principal Planner Scott Ramich will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, and it will also be referred to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. Mr. Ramich.
Thank you, and good evening. This case is a rezoning request for two properties totaling about 3.24 acres near Mayfair Shopping Center in central Cary. The site is on the north side of Southwest Maynard Road. It's immediately west of the Mayfair Shopping Center. So this aerial view provides a little more context. It's looking north. On this side, you can see that the site really has limited frontage on Maynard Road. Most of the site is hidden behind the Bruegers site on Maynard. It's immediately west of the food line. It's adjacent to Rose Street Park. And the Bertrose subdivision is west and north of the site, Gordon Street stubs all the way to the property line. So this site's undoubtedly a bit familiar to you because you entertained a prior rezoning for it in 2016. At that time, the owner had requested rezoning to allow either mini-storage or office, and at that time, the rezoning request was denied. Since then, the Imagine Cary Community Plan was adopted 12 months ago, and it now provides updated and fresh guidance for both neighborhoods and our mixed-use centers. This site is currently split-zoned with 2.78 acres, Zone General Commercial District, and 0.46 acres, Zone Residential 12. The R12 portion you see in the upper-left corner of the site is actually about a 15,000-square-foot residential lot. And then there's a tiny 5,000-square-foot R12 remnant that's immediately on Maynard, that's that little piece you see in the lower left of the site. The zoning for this area really hasn't been changed for about 40 years. It dates back to the development of the subdivision in the '60s and the shopping center in the '70s. In addition, the entire General Commercial District portion of the site as it exists today is also in sight of the Mayfair Commercial Mixed Use Overlay District. The overlay district was established in 2003. So the applicant's request consists of several parts. It consists of the following. First, he proposes to extend the General Commercial Zoning District onto that vacant R12 lot in the northwest corner of the site, so GC would extend there. Second, proposes to extend the General Commercial Zoning to the southwest corner of the site, that little 5,000-square-foot remnant there. And finally, he proposes to apply zoning conditions over the entirety of the subject site. The proposed conditions consist of some limitations on allowed uses and as well as some minimum setback requirements. So let's take first, well, first we'll take a look at the related conditions. This is a list of some of the uses, actually, most of the uses allowed by right today in the General Commercial District. We've kind of limited this list to things that are actually remotely feasible on the site. There are some other things that aren't here, such as public and institutional uses. So all of these uses are currently allowed today by right on the 2.78-acre GC portion of the site. The applicant proposes to prohibit four of these use types, namely prohibiting kennels indoor and outdoor, vets that have outdoor kennels, nightclubs and bars whether indoor or outdoor, and hotels and motels. All the remaining uses would still be allowed on the site. You may know some of the allowed uses that would remain are, there's some fairly intense ones here, such as vehicle service, restaurants, car wash, amusement establishments. But again, those are already allowed by right on the commercial portion of the site. The other proposed zoning conditions concern building setbacks. And the setbacks are different, there are two properties that make up the case. That existing residential lot at 202 Gordon Street, which is undeveloped, for that site, their condition is proposing a minimum 60-foot setback at the northern property line and a 70-foot setback on the western property line. Those are shaded gray. For the large site, the 2.78-acre parcel at 128 Southwest Maynard proposes having a minimum 50-foot building setback next to any adjacent residential lots. I do want to note that the conditions are for building setbacks. These are not buffers. Buffers would need to be provided according to LDO standards when the development plan is submitted. It's also, we'd also like to point out, the setbacks applied to buildings, you can place other things that would not be covered by building setbacks, or things like parking lots, retaining walls, drive aisles, and so forth. But these are building setbacks. So staff has evaluated the case according to the policies and framework of the Imagine Cary Community Plan, and we'll look at some of those findings now. First, we want to take a look at the Future Growth Framework map for the site and the adjacent neighborhood. A small portion of the site today, those R12 pieces are in, are designated as part of a heritage neighborhood, as is the entire adjacent subdivision. And as you may recall, heritage neighborhoods are one of the four neighborhood types, and they're in the oldest part of Cary. They're in the center of Cary, and they describe our subdivisions and neighborhoods built in the '60s, '70s, up until about the early 1980s. Lot sizes in heritage neighborhoods tend to be a quarter to half-acre in size. And every, the red portion of the site is designated as Commercial Mixed Use Center in the community plan. And as you may recall, in Imagine Cary, Commercial Mixed Use Centers are the second tier of mixed-use centers. Destination Centers are the biggest ones, and you'll be acting on a case in a Destination Center in Eastern Cary later this evening. Commercial Mixed Use Centers are the second, is the next tier down. And in Imagine Cary, we significantly reduced the number of mixed-use centers. We now have only eight Commercial Mixed Use Centers. We now have only eight Commercial Mixed-Use Centers in all of Cary and Wake County, and this is one of those eight. They're intended, according to the plan, to have a mix of residential, office, and commercial uses, to be walkable, integrated, buildings of four to five stories, and have uses mixed either side-by-side or vertically within the same buildings. So, it's probably helpful here to be able to see the center in a little more context. So, we've zoomed back out to an aerial view looking north, and everything shaded magenta is inside of this Commercial Mixed-Use Center. So, you're able to see its proximity next to the food line. There's two shopping centers currently in this center, both the Mayfair Plaza, as well as the Big Lots Plaza Shopping Centers. We thought it would also be helpful to give you some context of other activity in this part of town, and Glen Air has recently submitted a rezoning proposal to develop the Carolina Pottery site, which used to be the old Kmart site, and they're proposing a mix of two-to-six-story buildings as an extension of their continuing care community. And the Glen Air site touches this site. They connect at the corners of the site diagonally. So, staff has identified a number of policies from three different chapters in the Imagine Cary Plan that bear directly on this case. We'll go through these in order. So, these two policies from the live and shape chapters both deal with compatibility with that adjacent neighborhood, the Bertrose subdivision. And when we take a look at that, there's a few things to note. One is, they have removed some uses. So, the prohibited uses have gotten rid of a couple uses suggested by the neighbors at some of the community meetings last summer, such as not allowing bars and nightclubs or kennels, with outdoor kennels next to the site. The setback conditions, staff took a look at the setbacks and the impact of those, as it's described in your staff report. What we found is that if the site develops with a commercial-retail use, the setbacks have no effect because the required buffers are already 65 feet, and then with a building setback beyond the buffer, if required, it will exceed that. But in General Commercial District, you can also do office, and if the site instead had an office use on it, then next to three lots, the property that today is at 202 Gordon Street, you would have building setbacks slightly farther away from those properties at 204 Gordon and 205 and 201 Rose Streets. In either case, under the rezoning, commercial law office uses, the actual uses could get slightly closer to those three lots at the same time, and that's also illustrated in the staff report, and we have illustrations if you'd like to see them later. And finally, Policy Four in the shop chapter, we move on to talking about the conformance with the vision for the Commercial Mixed-Use Center. So, first, we looked at compatibility with the neighborhood. Now, we talk about the majority of the site and how does it conform to the vision for that mixed-use center. So, as we looked at this, it's worth noting, the majority of that site is already zoned straight commercial, and all those uses are currently allowed. This rezoning case does remove a few uses that you may not ordinarily wish to have in a mixed-use center, some you may. There is, however, no specific end-use type identified. So, there's nothing, that wide range of uses you see is mostly still on the table, and we can't really tell you anything about what will actually get built there. There are also no conditions here in this case that will tell us anything about the site design form or character of what could get built on the site eventually. So, the site, it has a lot of unknowns today, and a lot of the unknowns would stay there in the future with the rezoning. The last policy that was worth noting is that in the shape chapter, we also have a statement that supports infill, and we support infill in particular where we have in existing commercial centers, in mixed-use centers. We'd like these infill sites to develop. So, it's perhaps worth noting that the existing GC zoning, if you see in that upper image on the slide, is a little bit awkward. It's a very, you know, jagged piece of property that presents some challenges marketing the site and finding a buyer and developer for it. And it's possible that the proposed rezoning, by putting the entire site under a common, consistent commercial zoning, would make the site more feasible for redevelopment and infill than it is today. In terms of stream buffers on the site, the site actually is fairly well unencumbered. Our GIS mapping shows the remnants of a stream buffer at the extreme southern edge of the site, and that may or may not actually be there. It predates the widening of a Maynard Road. Field determination would be required to find out if you have, if any wetlands are on the site, so we don't have any information about that. As we've already noted, Rose Street Park is adjacent to the site, immediately to the north. At the time of site plan, it would be, on the basis of the use proposed, whatever that may be in the future, staff would look at whether or not there needed to be any pedestrian connections to the site. There is a existing road right-of-way that serves the loading docks behind the Carolina Pottery and Food Line sites that provide some access, but whether pedestrian connections are provided would be a site plan issue. There are no greenways or street-side trails in this area. Southwest Maynard Road, when it was widened about a decade ago, does have dual sidewalks, so it's well-served with pedestrian facilities, just not greenways or our 10-foot street-side trails. In terms of transportation, Southwest Maynard's been widened. It's recommended to be a five-lane thoroughfare. It is a five-lane thoroughfare, and pretty much at its ultimate section today. In terms of transit, this site has a lot of opportunities. It's one of the best-served sites in town, as is this entire mixed-use center. We've got two routes. Go-Cary Routes 1 and 2 on Maynard are right in front of the site. Go-Triangle Route 301 is right in front of the site, and Go-Curry Route 5 on Kildare Farm Road is only 600 feet away. There's a lot of potential in this site for some wonderful use in the future. We're just not sure what it would be yet. Two neighborhood meetings have been held for this case. The first one was on June 7, 2017, so last summer. At that time, the applicant only proposed to rezone the 202 Gordon Street site, that 15,000-square-foot lot, to General Commercial. But at that meeting, neighbors asked a lot of questions about, well, what are you planning to do with the larger site, the 2.78-acre GC site? And neighbors also had questions then about, well, what about Gordon Street connecting to the site? What about Stormwater? So, in response to those questions and requests, the applicant added to the rezoning request that larger 2.78-acre site, the existing GC site, to the rezoning case and added in the conditions you've heard tonight. Community feedback at the meeting in December, just the other month, still continued about the road connection, Gordon Street, whether it would or would not connect to the site. And neighbors still had questions about, well, what's actually going to be built on the site? There were still lots of questions, trying to look into the future and see what the actual use would someday be. So, notification for tonight's hearing was mailed to all properties within 800 feet of the site and mailed through mail notification, and we posted the property in two locations. So, this concludes our presentation. The applicant is present this evening to give his remarks, and we're available for questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Ramich. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
My name is Doug Ledson. I have this property, and I'm sure you remember me from, I guess, about a year and a half ago or something. We've had now a total of five neighborhood meetings on this. First three was to determine what the neighbors would prefer to have on it, and then the last two here have been what they did not want to have on it. So, what we did is, we ended up excluding those things that they had really deep concern about. And as Scott had said, it has a big concern on the larger parcel. So, with discussions with planning, I decided to add those conditions that were on the small one-third acre and put it on the entire parcel. So, this was, again, done to appease the neighborhood and elevate some comfort level. And I'm hoping that's what we've done. You know, we do have restrictions on this property because of the shape and everything else, but it's still going to be challenging, even with, you know, with what we've done for getting the entire property in one zoning. But I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Nope?
Okay. Now, it's time for the public hearing at 5.3 Gordon Street and Southwest Maynard Road, rezoning 17REZ 19. Now, I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and as I mentioned earlier, this will be reviewed by our Planning and Zoning. Oh, please. I'm sorry. Absolutely.
So, pretty much what the, Mr. Ramich, pretty much what the request is looking for is to add that one R12 parcel into the overall, or to add it to the existing General Commercial site and that little bitty thingy on the bottom-left that butts Maynard, and then prohibit a few uses and add some buffers that, depending on how the site develops, may or may not be of value, correct?
Correct, or setbacks and building setbacks, yeah.
Other questions, comments?
I'll just make a comment. I have a lot of reservations that there aren't more restrictions made. If I lived adjacent to that, I'd be very concerned about some of those. I don't have the full list in front of me, but the vehicle service would definitely be one that I would be very concerned about, and several others. We had at least one exercise where we tried to imagine what this site would be, not just the pottery place and the food line, but this adjacent parcel here. And I have a lot of concern about the fact that we have different uses coming in that may conflict with what that vision is. And I'm talking about this site, as well as the other rezoning that's in this, to the north of this. If we have that vision and believe it's the right thing, then we need to stick by that vision and pursue that. It would be nice if the applicant, since he was going through the process of doing a rezoning on this bigger parcel, if he had gone ahead and done the mixed-use PDPs, that we call it the PDP, so that we could have had some assurance that it was going to come in in a way that helped us get to our end vision. So, I have a lot of reservations about the way that this is framed, and I'm not sure that it's the right thing for us in this location.
When you say, just so I understand your comment, when you say the mixed-use PDP, this applicant doesn't own the other site, they only...
No, but the applicant could have done it for this site, could have...
Oh, for just this site. I thought you were talking about the entire...
Yes, so that we could have a better understanding about how the buildings are going to relate to this neighborhood and how this parcel of land will act as a transition between the neighborhood and this bigger parcel. So, I think it's important upon us to figure out if we still want that vision for mixed-use for that whole area and then pursue it.
I would agree with most everything, except we are concerned with the proposed project on the north. I was just trying to get clarification, what exactly their request, because, I mean, my fear is, the majority of the site's already zoned, general commercial, and a lot of the uses, that list could come in today by right. Adding that R12 parcel to the north-left definitely makes development of the site easier. But, you know, I've got concerns regarding access and similar that you spoke about regarding the mixed-use. I actually thought the previous proposal was, is better than what I'm seeing today regarding the amount of conditions that that building had, neighborhood support, had the look and feel of office, you know, it was much more conditioned than what we're seeing here. So, I almost worry that we're adding that parcel to the north, the R12 parcel. You know, there's a reason this piece of property has sat undeveloped for a long time, and I worry adding that parcel in the bottom-left, you could end up with some of those commercial developments that we may not want to see here. So, I've got concern regarding access, coming off of Maynard Road, and how close that is to the adjoining R12 homes. So, I'm not feeling great about it.
Mr. George?
I'd like to commend Mr. Ledson, because I think he clearly has been listening to neighbors. Maybe he can't get in our heads for the vision, but I feel like he's listened to neighbors, and I think he's to be commended for that. I've got some concerns. I wish it were MXD myself, because I would like to, we've got a stoplight at Killmaine that needs to serve this site, but it probably needs to serve the larger site if, when redeveloped and Carolina Pottery goes and if the food line gets demolished, we, it's the only, would be the only left out, because right now, it's just right in, right in, right out, left over to get to the shopping center off of Maynard right now. So, that would be like my comment, is I wish we had, wish we had that opportunity, but since it's next to GC, it's, you just, it may not fill what our vision is, but I don't know how we're going to get that, our vision.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I think that's, that's kind of the struggle I think we're all dealing with. I mean, Ms. Jennifer, you were talking about when we looked at it in the past, you know, a lot of our thoughts were, as we continue to grow and as downtown continues to grow, this is one of those major entrances into town, and right now, it's kind of the legacy of the '70s and the '80s with the kind of the eclectic buildings with the bank and then, you know, one of the restaurants and all that. And then now seeing Glen Air looking at that piece on the north, you know, to me, it makes it even more exciting that if we could stay to a vision of that corner, we would have the opportunity as, as these things age out, that we could have something really, really nice for that whole intersection. I mean, the phrase we heard at one of the other zonings a couple of months ago is like, okay, getting in the way of great. I mean, what I keep seeing is this like okay stuff, and it's like zone for it or part of it, and we're allowing, and they're trying to work and help with some of the restrictions, but the potential of that site, especially as the redevelopment of the Carolina Pottery and that area builds out, I mean, we have so much potential for that really being a great entrance into downtown and the expansion, and then you could see it on the other side, too, as it would possibly grow and creep toward the big lots. But the harsh reality is, you've got good tenants there, you've got, you know, the restaurant, you've got the coffee place, you know, you've got great things there, and how do you find that balance? I, you know, at least I applaud the applicant for working with the neighborhood about buffering and protecting, but, you know, I really, I struggle with it also, it being so, so piecemeal as to what our vision was for that area.
And I think the constrictions by the piecemeal, in talking with Mr. Ledson, I mean, we've got the Bruegers, which used to be the Hardee's, and then the little flat building, which has gotten, had a little bit, everything, you know, for the last 30 years, they have no interest in making any changes, so it's right in the middle.
I understand.
So, you have a donut hole around Bruegers, and then the food line, who knows what's going to happen there, but it's just hard for, I guess it's hard to get the landowners together and see the whole vision. Maybe that's what developers are for, you know, we got to get something, that somebody could see something great here on the corner and talk to all those landowners and come back to us, and if they came back with an all MXD, then I think we would, the food line and all that, that would be something that would help us get our vision.
Yeah, I mean, if someone came in holistically...
Yeah.
That would be ideal, somebody look at the entire parcel on that corner and then give us a mixed-use project that incorporates everything. That is what we would really like to have happen here.
We knew a developer that was looking for some work somewhere, I don't know.
Other comments?
When you compare this proposal to our vision, it definitely falls short. There's no doubt about that. And when you compare the proposal to the previous proposal that we had for the mini-storage here, perhaps it falls short also. It's a matter of opinion, but I can see how you can, you can think that. But if you compare it the way I think we, I like to... But if you compare it the way I think we, I like to compare it, just get to the bottom line, compare the present zoning with the proposed zoning, not the previous proposal and not the vision for the future, but just look at the zoning. We have general commercial now, now we have general, the new proposal gives us general commercial with some better conditions than exist now, maybe not enough, but certainly better. And adding the R-12 to it, provided the setbacks are there and at time of development, the buffers are there to protect the neighborhood, I think makes great sense from a development standpoint. So, I don't think, looking at the current rezoning and the proposed rezoning, I don't think it's that bad, but whether we need to take those blinders off and look at the bigger picture when we do this is another story. So, the applicant has struggled with this for years, I'm struggling with it tonight.
If I could, I'll follow up on one question Ms. Bush, you raised, I think you alluded to, which is, it's just a little bit unusual, mostly what counsel, what you've seen in anything within a mixed-use overlay district, usually you see a mixed-use rezoning request with a preliminary development plan. That's nine times out of ten what's going to come in. In the case where you have existing base zoning and what an applicant, all they want to do is add conditions to it, they don't have to ask for the MXD PDP. So, because the applicant has existing GC zoning and wants to add conditions to further restrict the GC zoning, that's why the applicant had two ways he could have come in. He could have asked for a mixed-use rezoning with the PDP, or keep the zoning he has today and add some conditions to it. Either are options you can take. Usually, in most mixed-use centers, you've got greenfield land turning over that's just R-40, so to get a different or better use, they do the MXD PDP. In the case of Glen Air, the reason you're going to see an MXD PDP there is because residential uses are not allowed in GC zoning. So, they have to do an MXD with a preliminary development plan in order to do something different in the overlay district. So, that's why there's two different ways this could have come in, but we do have that option where an applicant can seek zoning conditions on their existing zoning.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Ramage. This will be referred to Planning and Zoning Board, they'll review it and send it back to us with a recommendation, and we'll take action on this at a future date. We now move to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is six point one, which is fiscal year eighteen street improvement project. Deputy Manager Russ, I had Sean Stigl on here, that's why I hesitate. Deputy Manager Russ Overton will introduce the item, and council may take action.
Playing, playing the role of Sean tonight. So, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make a few quick points about, about this before council considers the item, especially for those that are new to Cary. First, our approach in keeping Cary streets in good condition is one part science and another part common sense, which has served our community well for nearly over two decades now. It's a data-driven process in that staff creates a repaving plan based on the findings of an independent third-party consultant who conducts a scientific analysis of pavement conditions on every street in Cary. At the same time, you give staff a measure of flexibility to allow for common sense and on-the-ground adjustments to address emergencies and conditions that have either worsened or failed to be detected during the third-party analysis, always staying under budget, of course. My second point in our approach, that is, it is also non-political. What I mean by that is that council really has no role in which street will be resurfaced. The council only decides how much money will be appropriated each year, and then approves the annual bid award, which you all are doing tonight. I wanted to make these points because staff just learned this week from Sean that our approach, especially in the non-political part, is not necessarily the norm in other municipalities. Once again, he told us that he was surprised and impressed by the Cary way. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to Amir to walk us through the item.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. Mayor, I had to change my list, too. I swear. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back again with the bid award. Our street improvement system was again rated in good condition by an outside consultant, and the annual street improvements project is a big part in maintaining this rating. Our, our street improvements project is an important part of our, of the maintenance of our valuable assets. yearly maintenance of our streets allows us to turn streets that look like this on the PowerPoint to streets that look like this. These asphalt repairs remove asphalt distresses that can damage vehicles. Along with street repairs, this project allows us to proactively address issues, reducing the cost of future maintenance. Repair curb and gutter does not provide adequate drainage, and improve access for all ages and abilities by upgrading curb ramps to new standards. This year alone, there's over a hundred curb ramps that are scheduled to be replaced and So, last year, we started the neighborhood proximity approach to our resurfacing program. We continue this for 2018, are planning to work in the following neighborhoods, shown in red. This year, we're planning to put down about 35,000 tons of asphalt across almost sixteen miles of town-maintained streets. So, at our last council meeting on January 11th, my colleague Alex Lopez discussed the coordination between the town's water main replacement project and our street improvements project. This year, about three-quarters of a mile of streets are being resurfaced where recent wire lines have been replaced. This will provide our citizens with a new water line and smooth asphalt for years to On December 22nd, three bids were received for the FY18 street improvements project. Lane Construction Corporation has been determined to be the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. Following approval of the bid award, the notice of award along with the contracts will be sent to Lane Construction for execution, with construction scheduled to start this In summary, staff recommends award of the construction contract to Lane Construction Corporation for $5,185,147.50, and also approve the streets, list of streets that is included in the staff report. That concludes the presentation. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions?
I have a quick question. We had a number of snow events, right, with a lot of salt, right? And I've noticed quite a bit, a number of the roads have deteriorated. How do you balance that with the list that you already have?
Yeah.
I mean, will you go back and look for some of the detrimental or degrading roads?
Yeah, so we do look at them every year, but we also, like Mr. Overton was saying, have the flexibility, or you guys revised with the flexibility to make, if there is the emergencies that come up, or, of course, conditions change by the time we look at them and design it and bid the project. So, we do have the flexibility to add streets that have deteriorated more since we've looked at them.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ready for a motion?
Make a motion to award the construction of the FY18 street improvements project to Lane Construction Corporation for the amount specified.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion.
Include the list of streets?
And I'll add to that a minute, thank you, amend my motion to approve the list of streets to be maintained as part of this. Thank you, Chuck.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, thank you. Now, move to our second discussion item, Wake County Hospitality Tax Funding Application. Planner Sandy Bailey will present this item, and council may take action.
Good evening, Council. The town is preparing an application in response to Wake County's call for proposals for small capital projects to be funded by hospitality tax revenue. The county's goal for this funding is to support and invest in civic and convention centers, performing arts centers, and sports and cultural arts facilities. The town has had great success with its own cultural and performing arts and sports venues. The engaged chapter of the Imagine Cary Community Plan discusses the town's goals and objectives for these venues, including maintaining and investing in them so that they remain competitive in terms of attracting national and international events, and thereby contribute to the local economy. These goals are shared by the county and are the basis for the small capital projects' funding selection process. The revenue collected from Wake County's room occupancy and prepared food and beverage tax is redistributed throughout the county to support venues that draw overnight visitors and promote tourism. The county issues a call for proposals every two to three years in a competitive process for awarding these funds. Currently, there's three and a half million dollars available. No one project will be awarded more than 1.5 million dollars, and all applicants are required to provide a 65% match. The town has been successful in previous hospitality tax funding applications. In 2013, we entered into an agreement with the county for 10 million dollars to be distributed over three venues in a 10-year period. This funding supported the construction of covered courts at the Cary Tennis Park, as well as the expansion of stadium seating and construction of locker rooms and installation of a video board at Wake Med Soccer Park. It also included construction of clubhouse facilities at the USA Baseball venue, which are currently in design. The town was again awarded funding in 2016 for lighting improvements at the Cary Tennis Park and for Wi-Fi and turf field installation at Wake Med Soccer Park, and those projects are anticipated to begin this year. After consideration of the county's funding criteria and projects already identified in the town's capital improvement plan, staff recommends submission of projects at two venues. The first is for sound and lighting system improvements at Coke Booth Amphitheater. The current lighting and sound systems are the original equipment that was installed at the amphitheater when it opened in 2001. This technology is 17 years old. Required repairs are a fairly regular occurrence, and it's often difficult to obtain parts and find technicians to work on the dated equipment. If either system were to fail, the town jeopardizes losing programming opportunities and revenue. The lighting and sound system improvements are anticipated to be a $700,000 project. Thirty-five percent funding by the county would equate to $245,000, requiring a $455,000 match from the town. Upgrading to an LED lighting system at Wake Med Soccer Park is also proposed for submission. Wake Med hosts NCAA, Major League, and international soccer events that are broadcast nationally and internationally. Upgrading to an LED system will allow Wake Med to keep current with international lighting standards for player safety and broadcasting, and to therefore remain eligible for those type of events. The total project cost is anticipated at 1.4 million dollars, including 490,000 from the county and 910,000 from the town. These proposed improvements at Wake Med and Coke Booth help ensure their continued competitiveness. Both venues host numerous annual events, which draw overnight visitor stays and bring tourist dollars into the local economy, and staff feels both projects will be very competitive in this selection process. Applications for funding are due on February 8th, and awards are anticipated to be made in spring or summer of this year. And once municipal agreements are signed with the county, projects will actually have three years for completion, as opposed to the two years that you see on your screen there. Staff recommends approval of submission of the funding application for up to 2.1 million dollars for lighting and sound system improvements at Coke Booth Amphitheater and Wake Med Soccer Park. Thank you, Council, and staff will be available to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
Was this already budgeted, the town match for FY 2018? I remember seeing it in one of the budget requests.
It's not in the current budget appropriation, no money has been appropriated, but, but these projects are in the longer-range capital improvement plan, so I think it was like...
So, not for this fiscal year?
That's right.
They were in the future one?
That's right. Yeah. Make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation to submit a funding proposal to Wake County.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, thank you, Ms. Bailey. We now move to our last discussion item, seventeen REZ-14 Fenton Mixed Use Development rezoning. Our Deputy Manager Russ Overton will present the item, and council may take action.
Good evening, Council. I'm wearing a couple of hats tonight, you can tell, but it's my pleasure to introduce the Fenton case. It's an exciting time to be in Cary. It's especially exciting to see that all that's going on in our Eastern Cary Gateway, whether that's the IKEA project that was recently approved, the mall phase two that is currently in review, or the Fenton project that's before you tonight. There are three things that you need to know about this project. The first is that this is a community-defining project. It's on a large greenfield site at a key location in town and a gateway to our town. And it's another spark that will, I'm sure, jump-start the rest of this area. Number two, there has been an extensive consideration process, spanning 32 months, with numerous opportunities for public input. The project has really evolved over this time, and we've had over 100 meetings with the applicant's team, and staff from every department has been involved in this rezoning case. And I just want to say that again, staff from every department has been involved in this case. Oops. And lastly, it fulfills, this project fulfills our vision for Imagine Cary and the Eastern Cary Gateway, a vision that was an entire community effort that will guide development and one that will ensure we may remain great well into the future. So, let's take a quick recap of the journey to this point. It's hard to believe, but it all started back in 2015, the summer of 2015. And a lot of iterations of this plan, we've come a long way since then, and on your screen is that original plan that came in, which actually included an IKEA on it for the beginning. But that all changed in December of 2016 with the adoption of Eastern Cary Gateway, and in 2017 with the adoption of our Imagine Cary Community Plan, which, by the way, had its one-year birthday party yesterday, and staff celebrated with cake.
Nice.
So, just in the last year, we've had so many things happen with this project. We've had a site visit to Atlanta, we've had three public hearings, we've had two work sessions with council, and it's been a fantastic process to this point. It's no accident how we got to this point tonight, and while visiting the Avalon, you may recall that we heard from developers that talked about their secret sauce to success. Well, in Cary, I believe that we have our own secret sauce, and that's our people, our staff, our council, and our citizens, plus our vision. And with those things, we are truly doing great work.
Thank you.
So, Mayor and Council, that brings us to tonight's rezoning discussion, and with that, I'll now turn it over to Mr. Rob Wilson to walk you through this request.
Good evening, Council. As you know, the applicant is proposing to rezone approximately 92 acres on the north side of Cary Town Boulevard. The site's currently zoned office-institutional with a strip of resource recreation along the western property line, and this zoning has been in place since 1984. The proposed zoning is mixed-use district, or MXD. A required component of this district is the preparation and cemental of a preliminary development plan, or PDP. So, what does the community plan call for in this location? Well, this area is the center of the Eastern Cary Gateway, and it is designated as a high-density mixed-use employment center. So, office, commercial, and residential uses are all envisioned, along with vertical mixing of these uses, as well as integrated gathering spaces and structured parking, all designed to create a visually appealing experience. So, what does Fenton include? The short answer is a full mix of uses. If the project builds out to the proposed maximum amount of development, it would have the office space equivalent to five MetLife buildings. The number of dwellings would be similar to the total number in the Silverton or Oxford-Hunt Plan Unit Developments, and retail space would be just shy of the amount of floor area in almost two Waverly places. There are also multiple community gathering areas and parking structures integrated throughout the project. As part of the proposed MXD zoning, the applicant has offered approximately 100 zoning conditions with the preliminary development plan, which are essential to making sure that the applicant's vision is achieved. It's important to note that the PDP has been revised since you last discussed this proposal at your December work session. Purple areas have been added. These are areas where vertical mixing of uses is required. Although there are many other places on the plan where vertical mixing of uses could occur, the applicant has committed that this will be the case for the buildings fronting on the main street. The PDP also regulates the amount of development that can be built on the site. Minimums and maximums are provided for each type of land use. In this case, there are also limits on the number of large tenants, and no traditional drive-throughs are allowed. The applicant has also revised the conditions regarding phasing since the council's December work session. The conditions continue to require that non-retail and vertically mixed uses are present from the very beginning of the project. After the first phase, the conditions also require every subsequent phase to include more non-retail space than retail space. This means that after the first phase, the overall amount of non-retail will quickly catch up to and surpass the amount of retail, providing both the envisioned mix of uses and the desired vertical mixing of these uses. and the desired vertical mixing of these uses. To ensure that the town receives the level of design that has been represented for the development, the developer has also offered a design guidebook as a zoning condition. The purpose of the guidebook is to make a commitment to a higher level of quality and greater caliber of design than would be required by the town's existing architectural standards. A significant amount of additional detail has been added to this guidebook since the council's December work session in order to make sure that this zoning condition properly addresses the envisioned quality and caliber of the project. One of the other zoning conditions that the developer has proposed is to enter into a development agreement with the town. Accordingly, the developer has offered a condition stating that the zoning cannot be implemented and that no development plan can be submitted until a development agreement has been approved by the council. As the project moves forward, all development would have to be compliant with both the rezoning and the development agreement in order to proceed. A key factor with any rezoning is whether or not it is consistent with the Imagine Cary Community Plan, and in this case, with the vision for the Eastern Cary Gateway Special Planning Area. After two and a half years of collaborative dialogue with the applicant, a year after the adoption of the Eastern Cary Gateway Special Planning Area and the Imagine Cary Plan, after countless meetings and months of extensive review by a multidisciplinary staff team, and after significant refinement of the proposed preliminary development plan and its associated zoning conditions, staff believes that the proposal reflects the desired land uses and mix of uses for the site, the intended intensity for this area, and the envisioned high quality of design for the Gateway site. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of the rezoning based on consistency with the vision for the site as identified in the town's Imagine Cary Community Plan and the Eastern Cary Gateway Special Planning Area. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mark Evangelista, who is the chair of the town's planning and zoning board, to give the board's recommendation on this proposal.
Thanks a lot. This was approved by planning and zoning board unanimously, so normally I'm not here to talk about a unanimous decision, but in this case, since it's of this magnitude, we're here to tell you just what everybody liked about it, and I'm glad we get to do that because there's some different things with this one. First of all, everyone on the board thought it fulfilled the elements of the Cary Community Plan and the Eastern Cary Gateway. Nothing was left lacking. Everything, it appeared, was taken care of and then some in those visions. Of specific note were, community gathering space and the vertical mixed use looked really good to quite a few of us, and we were quite happy to see that. Traffic for a project of this magnitude and this long scope is very fluid. It's dynamic. Things can be going back and forth. There was a little concern about something of this magnitude, why you just don't do all the mitigations recommended in the traffic study. They're not that big when you consider the scope of the entire project. That said, the development agreement, while that's new to us, we thought that's probably the best idea going for being dynamic and adjusting some of these traffic issues as we go forward, because we don't know what's going to be going on even the next year or two down the road, traffic-wise. So this development agreement, while new, was very promising, so we think traffic might be addressed a little bit in that area. We're just not sure how, but we have hope. And then finally, there were some, if there is any negativity and any folks who had some problems, it was just that affordable housing and some of the age restrictions weren't quite as fleshed out in this phase as perhaps they should be in every phase. When you talk about these things, affordable housing and age restrictions, and the concept of the entire project, and you say, well, that will be for other phases, for something this big, it should be a consideration in every phase, but that was not enough for any member to be opposed to this project at all. It was just if they had to figure something that they thought could have been done a little better, that was it. But on the whole, strong recommendations from every one of us.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Evangelista?
No.
The report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So council, you've heard tonight how this project is a special project that hasn't had an extensive process and meets the vision for the area. And while the rezoning case or phase comes to a close, there's still a lot of work to be done. The development agreement team is still working and will bring an agreement back to a public hearing shortly. It's been my pleasure working with our entire staff, as well as the developer's team on this project, and on behalf of the entire team, we'll turn it back over to you, council, for discussion.
Comments? Questions?
I'll go ahead and kick it off. First and foremost, thank you to staff. Thank you to everyone in all departments for all your work on this. This has been no easy task, we know. I think you all may have enjoyed a lot of it. It's new and exciting. It's different. It's not your typical rezoning in Cary or the stuff that we normally see. I think you said it best when you said it's a community-defining project. It's a big deal. It's a very big deal. It's also a big deal considering what's going to happen across the street with the IKEA and the redevelopment of Cary Town Center Mall, and the swim club expansions and things that are going to happen in the future. This, you know, Cary's on the map, but this is, puts a big red dot on the map now. But I also want to thank the Columbia Development Team for your patience and your perseverance. Yeah, I remember the first time I met some of y'all, y'all came by the shop to talk to me and asked about what my vision for this area was, and, you know, I said it was a destination. And then afterwards, I learned, at first, it was a grocery store. And I was kind of like, okay. But two and a half years later, here we are. It's a lot more than a grocery store. It's a lot more than retail. It's a lot more than residential. It's a lot more than office. It's a lot more than hotels. This is, this is an experience, and it will be hard to keep my wife away when it's done. So if I come out with my hand out for money, you know why. I also want to thank staff for all the work on the Eastern Gateway. You know, it's not just this project alone, but that component of the Cary Community Plan as a whole. You know, it was basically, we were going through this whole Cary Community Plan process, and then had to like stop and focus on that Eastern Gateway component, and we had to do it fast, and y'all did one heck of a job on it. So I love what I see in the design guidebook. I really do. You know, it's, you put up some really nice pictures of things in Cary, but when you look in that guidebook, it's like, wow. I mean, it's impressive. I really appreciate the effort to address at least the concerns I have. I think others did as well, as far as the phasing of the project. I think that gives us the assurances that what we're looking for in regarding the vertically mixed uses and that Main Street and that experiential project that we're looking for. So, and then the developer agreement that will soon be worked out, that definitely lays out responsibilities between, you know, the town and the developer and so on. I'm excited. I mean, I, you know, part of me can't wait for this to happen, and part of me hopes my wife never finds it, but this, I'm only less than a mile from it, so it's awesome. This is amazing. It's a great time to be Cary, so thank you all.
Other comments, questions?
I'd just say really fast, I think a lot of credit is due to all of the council members as well, because originally, the proposal, before there was a Columbia, there was a proposal for single-family homes here, and the council stuck by a vision for something that was bigger, and this is in line with what we were envisioning. So it took a very, a series of very hard noes to get us to this yes. So anyway, I think that, that's huge.
Other comments, questions?
Well, I'm very excited, because I'm not going to repeat anything that you said, but I'm very excited about the opportunity for us to create something bigger than I think I could have even imagined at the time, even though I've been to Santana Row, been to Avalon, we've been to all these places. I think this is going to be better than those. It better be better than those. And those are pretty good, right? I mean, those are pretty good. I mean, I think, you know, just thinking big, I think that there is a place for everyone in Cary to feel like they own part of Fenton, right? That the office workers who will come to these office locations will feel a part of Fenton. The people who come to the grocery store will feel a part of Fenton. That, you know, the people who work there and go shop there, including your wife, will feel a part of Fenton. And, you know, hopefully, you know, I hope we take into consideration the people who are going to work there and take into consideration what the planning and zoning board said, that, you know, maybe we need to find affordable housing. You know, we've got a lot going on with smart cities. This could be an amazing smart city implementation, because it's greenfield, right? So I hope you guys are open, because so far, that's all you've been, is open, which we really appreciate, open to all of these great new ideas, and we hope that you start to bring people to Cary when it's built, like you brought us to Avalon. And I really look forward to seeing this develop.
Any concerns that I may have had along the way, and there have been some, they pale by comparison to the benefits that this is going to bring to the town of Cary and to Cary citizens, so they're not even worth mentioning tonight. I want to thank Columbia Development, that's in the extended team. It's just the beginning. It sounds like it's over by us doing this. It's just, it's just starting.
The meetings are over.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, actually, we have the developer agreement.
The developer agreement is going to be a huge endeavor. It's a huge lift.
And to our staff, I mean, to present us with something that we can vote for with pride is wonderful, so we thank you for that.
I would tag on to what Ms. Bush said.
I think that if, not just smart cities, but solar and everything that we possibly can do on this site to be just the absolute best thing, it's just a feather in our cap for Cary. I think it just, it's going to say, it's going to make a statement, and I really appreciate that. And I just have one question that the community's been asking me for a while, and it's not when the Wegmans coming, was, maybe somebody on staff knows, maybe we'd have to find Jeff Ulmer or Tim Bailey, but I wanted to know who paved that road to nowhere. It's been there all these years.
Town.
We paved it? Okay. I never, I never found an answer, but I'll let the community know, we paved the road to nowhere.
It was my project. Years ago, but we paved it because at the time, we got a break in control of access there, because we knew we wanted a road, and we knew we wanted Trinity to go somewhere. So we, we just kind of took that initiative to work with the state before their criteria changed, whereby we may not have gotten a break in control of access.
So thank you for your vision and your foresight.
And it was other people as well, but we got that done years in advance.
That just shows what a great staff we got. Yeah, that's great.
We do have great staff.
Mrs. Smith?
Most of it has been said. I'm not going to repeat it, but I did get a kick out of listening to you, Don. You know, when they, when they came to me and they said, well, what do you want? And the only thing I could think of is, well, definitely not what you're showing me. So when you think back at that very beginning, and the ability to try to harness all of us and our ideas, and even the challenge we had of having that big vision, you know, it was a credit to them that that didn't turn into anything adversarial or negative. It was one of those things where, well, okay, that's not what you want, but then, you know, share a little bit more. So I really applaud, you know, the, the team, the Columbia team for their patience, their willingness to listen, and, and you've heard the appetite of all of us up here, and we have a lot of different visions for that area and to work with that. And then on top of that, you know, having the foresight to work with our staff, who kind of know us probably a little bit better than you do, and work with them to try to come up with this. So this is really one of those products where all the pieces, we all had little components of those pieces, but it really takes a lot of work from an applicant to put all that together, kind of get the gist of it, and work with us and actually read our community plan, you know, work through that, and understand what makes Cary tick. And so, you know, I'm excited about that, too. I think we got a lot of work ahead of us with that agreement, but, you know, the one thing that I always worry about is, we have cases all the time where, you know, we approve some, what we approve isn't what we end up with. It isn't what we get. And that's, you know, we've all been burned by that over the years, and I think this is a case where you've heard that concern, and through the use of the agreement that you've stepped up and volunteered to work with us on, I think we minimize that, that type of activity happening. And, you know, so I'm excited also to go forward. I appreciate and applaud all the work that's happened to date, and I think it is an exciting time as we move forward.
And the only thing I would add, since everything's been said, is to go from, oh, you know, the first reaction to, when this is done, and we look back on this, the transformative period, I said this yesterday, in Cary's history, this will be a huge milestone. So you went from, oh, we're unimpressed, to that is very impressive, and I can tell you from sitting in this seat, especially if you sat here a long time like Jack and Jennifer and I, when you go around town and you see developments you've approved or voted against, you're either proud or not so proud. And I'm looking forward to driving by this as, hopefully not too old of a man, and saying, I voted for that. That's something I was a part of. That's something that's really great, and that's what I expect to see. I think it will be fantastic and great.
At my age, please.
Maybe we should, maybe we should make a motion since the time is... So I'll make a motion to approve 17 REZ-14 and adopt the statement of consistency as attached to the staff report for this item.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you for all you've done to get us to this point. We look forward to working with you as we move forward. All right, we're ready to go.
This is the one time you're going to let the market out.
The one time I'm not going to see you.
That's a no-no.
We're ready to go into closed session.
Oh, pursuant to GS 14331811A3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town. Among other things, the council expects to receive advice concerning the following lawsuits: Woodland on the Green Apartments versus the town of Cary, estate of John Burl Hudson, Norfolk Southern versus Norfolk Southern Railroad Company et al., and the estate of Dorothy Louise Flint versus Norfolk Southern Railway Company et al., and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 14331810E.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we're going into closed session.
Cue the music.
Cue the music.[1148.98]